Okay, good evening and welcome to the West Seneca Central School Board of Education meeting. I hope everybody's enjoying this nice weather because I think it's going to come to an end shortly. Toward the weekend, it doesn't look so great, but we can just hope that it stays at least a little bit nice through this.
Like snow or rain?
Rain.
Okay.
But in the 50s, it's like, you know, after the 80s, I don't know. Mr. Kwiatkowski, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
To be the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, my computer is not cooperating here. But anyways, so, Mr. Beistrak, did you want to start?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Spears. Welcome to everybody. Thanks for being here tonight and anybody tuning in. I just wanted to go ahead and do, I guess, a brief presentation. So this is actually extremely timely. So I think as everyone's aware, the federal government has released some money for school districts to assist with pandemic, basically, I'll call it relief. So essentially, understanding and recognizing that our students have had a pretty interesting past year and, you know, some change there and just ultimately we're just giving us some assistance in being able to bring students back in the coming school year. So there are some, I guess, some, I guess, strings attached to how this money is spent. And I have our team, actually, our central office team, that's going to be able to talk a little bit more about that in some slightly more granular detail. We do have a brief presentation that we're going to do just to kind of outline some of the thoughts and some of the feedback that we've received from a variety of different stakeholders. We actually had issued some surveys yesterday. We had four different surveys go out. It's kind of a jumping off point, although we've honestly been doing some planning for the past several weeks since we realized that this money was going to become available and also since it's kind of dripping, coming out in drips and drabs in terms of how it can be utilized and just the process for doing that. So, you know, ultimately, you know, this is money that's going to be, that can be spent over about three years. So some of the things that we're supposed to keep in mind, we want things that are going to be able to ultimately, you know, benefit our students from an academic standpoint, but also socially and emotionally because we know the, you know, we recognize that, you know, there's been quite a bit going on for our students. So some of the things that we need to keep in mind is the money goes away after three years. So it's one of those things where either you, you know, you kind of feather in some non-re, things, some supports that are non-reoccurring costs. Might be professional development. It could be, you know, consultants, things like that, contract work, but things that, you know, if you do have to build in some positions, for instance, that would be recurring costs, you have to basically just account for what's going to happen when the money goes away, which is certainly something we're capable of doing. So it's actually a very exciting opportunity that we do have, but we obviously have to be very careful in the planning process. So I'm going to actually call up to the microphone right now, Mr. Thiel. Ari's one of our business officials. We have, this is Lewandowski, I don't know if you want to come up or if you're, you're good where you're at. Okay, one accountant's good enough for this particular conversation. And it might just be a little easier and maybe flow a little easier if the rest of our central team. Cause up Dr. Servoni, Mrs. Fowler, Mrs. Persico. There are some additional microphones right below there just to kind of keep the presentation moving here, so.
Go ahead.
Yep, jump right in.
You know what, I do not have the clicker.
Oh, is the clicker up here?
Yep.
Sorry, rookie.
I think you just click on it. There you go.
All right, so what, the grant monies come in two different pockets. The coronavirus relief and response supplemental appropriation, which is stimulus number two, according to the news media, and the American Rescue Plan, which would be stimulus number three. A total of $13.6 million. $6 million in the first, Carissa, and seven and a half million, 7.6 million dollars roughly in the ARP funding. Within those particular grants, they're broken out into three or four different categories. There are some holdbacks for specific purposes. That should not be difficult for us to achieve. They all center on student goals. They're all student focused, so the team has been moving on a general plan and those will fill in on themselves.
Can you go a little closer to the microphone? The air conditioner's making really tough in here.
There's also some mics on the bottom, too.
Is that better?
Yes.
So we talked a little bit about, you know, what, when, why. I will tell you that I know that this board of education in working collaboratively with MAUD, our school administrators, our associations, we've placed a high priority on our core academic areas, on meeting students' needs and specifically ELA and math, how we are integrating our technology, not only moving to one-to-one, but how do we support that, especially as we come back and return hopefully in full in this fall? How do we not only support the use of one-to-one devices in our buildings with our students, with our families, our teachers, but also how do we integrate it? In addition, special education services. How are we meeting the needs of our diverse students? Both those potentially that need additional support and those that need to be excelled and pushed forward. And social emotional well-being has certainly been a large theme within our survey results already, but also as a focus that our district has had. And we have a robust social emotional well-being program for our students in a variety of facets, through our social work, our psychology, our psychologists, our SROs, our counselors, and to continue to build upon that and trying to meet the needs of our students. So these priorities directly align with what the verbiage is in the grant and also align with what I know this group has established as a priority for the last several years. The themes, and I shared a little bit this with you in an email, is around our district programming, our instruction, our interventions, our use of technology, our social emotional supports, but also facilities. You know, as Mr. Beistrak said, yes, we can add positions which are highly valued in our work, as, you know, we are a human resource industry, but also how are we improving our facilities for our students and for our staff to create a safe and create a, the learning environment that's going to be the most conducive for our students? So those are certainly our themes and have been our themes, I believe, as a district, as a board, and also coincidentally really align with not only some of the verbiage in the grant, but some of what we're hearing from our community and from our stakeholders. Ms. Persico will speak a little bit about our district programming. I know one bullet up there that I deal with a lot is with our class sizes and placing a priority on our class sizes. I'm proud to say that we have been able to hold within our board guidelines since doing this work. I know that's a priority of our board and that's something that, you know, there's been a lot of talk of, you know, students, are they going to be transitioning potentially back into our district and keeping a keen eye on that and looking at our enrollment trends and seeing as we head into the summer. We always do this with our kindergarten enrollment, but also just looking as students are transitioning in and out of the district, how is that affecting our class sizes, specifically at our elementary level, and trying to create an environment that's best for our students to learn and to grow. So, and really to transition back into what we hope is traditional school this fall.
Can I use a question? You said it was a three-year grant or a five-year? I'm sorry.
Spending under the first pocket of the Carissa has to be accomplished by June, September of '23.
Okay.
Okay, spending under the second, the ARP, is September of '24.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Some of these funds, as you are already aware, will be dedicated to our summer remediation at both the elementary and middle school levels, having an in-person program this summer that will really deal with our neediest population, our students who have demonstrated a greatest need, if you will. And then we will also be continuing the opportunity that we have enjoyed over the past several years at the high school for the credit recovery for our students who will need those credits for graduation requirements.
Just narrow it right.
Narrow right. Okay. Jackie and I are going to talk about some of the things here on this slide. Reading support has been identified, as you are aware, and it's something that you've also identified as a board, as something that we need to put in place in our building. So we are looking to use some of the funding for expenditures for reading support, whether it's a reading teacher, whether we have AIS additions in math and/or ELA, really defining what that structure looks like across our buildings in the district, making it so that it has a curriculum to follow and that we are seeing gains from the programming that we are going to be implementing across all of the buildings come fall. Literacy and math, as you know, is a huge focus. We're exploring a multitude of options, whether it's coaching or mentoring, some side-by-side work with consultants, really, you know, in initial phases right now of talking about what that might look like, but lots of great ideas on the table and many great ideas coming through the surveys that we've just put out yesterday. So that's exciting. Special education?
Similarly, looking at instruction and interventions in the area of special education as we know that those are our students in which we want to close the gap as much as possible. So working in collaboration with Mrs. Persico and our other administrators and stakeholders, teachers and teams in regards to literacy and math, but also embedding some specific areas of focus in the area of special education for our students. Additionally, looking at social emotional support. This is something that is a, very much a popular theme in our surveys right now, and it is popular in terms of what you read out in the newspaper, what you're reading in just general information, is that how are we going to support our students, our families and everyone involved as we head back to what we think is going to be a more normal time in school? With that being something that we know that we need to target, looking at some opportunities for some social work support, some behavior intervention support, possibly with like a behavioral specialist or behavior support person to help students when they do come back, those students who are overtly demonstrating some challenging behaviors, or even those students who are internalizing some of those challenging behaviors as well. We anticipate there may be some concerns in regards to anxiety about returning to school and what that might look like. Also taking a look at how can we capture that probably from a whole perspective, the whole child perspective, the family perspective, a lot of ways in which that we could tackle that utilizing both social worker and behavioral support. Also looking at exploring our co-teaching supports. This was something that was just starting before the pandemic where we were really involved in professional development in our co-teaching collaboratives and really expanding that as well as continuing to provide professional development, as well as some embedded support and embedded collaboration, and just some ways in which we can help people be able to feel confident in that, as well as being able to learn and use some variety of different strategies that might be a little bit different given the students when they return, both academically and socially emotionally. Yep.
I just wanted to add one piece of information with the social emotional support. Our middle schools, as you know, are designated TSI schools, and this year, the template for their building plans has shifted a great deal. Still has a focus on the academics for sure, but it has shifted a great deal to include social emotional support. So a big component of that will be student interviews that take place to gain the student perspective on what they feel is a need moving forward for next school year, and some of the commitments therefore that have to comprise the plan will be based off of the student input and interviews with the whole SEF team. So we foresee that some of the funding may be allocated to the middle schools to help support any of those student identified goals and things that we need to put in place as a result of those conversations with those stakeholders.
Real quick, Carm, that's the survey that just came home. I had one in my mailbox, survey came home, or not, a letter came home informing the parents about the survey.
Yes, so there was a survey in the fall and then one in the spring. So that is part of it, but then there will be separate student interviews that take place at the middle school level from the building team. So really trying to get at the root of what the students identify or focus areas moving forward, whether it's based off of the pandemic, which could certainly be, or any other area that they feel might, we might need to focus our efforts.
Perfect, thank you. Technology?
Last year, when the district transitioned to one-to-one, Scott had to put his higher-level techs in the buildings to handle what I would call ordinary course of business issues, whether it's password or connection and those kinds of issues for teachers and students. So we are looking to build out our support staff with a lower-level tech support team, one in each building, so those issues can be addressed immediately, put aside, and they don't interrupt a teaching day. So that's part of this build-out here. We're also looking at a possibility of increasing tech integrators, and we're also looking at purchasing devices and software that'll help in the process, not only in providing the students with a smoother transition to technology use in the classroom, but also creating data that's necessary to evaluate the program we're putting in place and revise it as we go forward. I think one of the important things to consider when you buy technology is how we purchase it. There are a lot of different ways to purchase it, whether it's E-Rate through BOSI's and BOSI's aid, through this grant, and we've asked technical questions of state education department to try to get answers on what, whether these funds can be used to supplement. So if we bought a million dollars' worth of technology and we had $300,000 left over after BOSI's aid, these grants are now applicable to absorb that $300,000. So we can leverage this to get farther down the road and get more for our money, if you will. Anything else on technology or should I go on? As far as facilities go, we've started conversations with the facilities group as to what would be their highest priority and trying to improve air quality and our internal environment in our buildings. We've asked the same question of SED. Can this be used to supplement building aid? So if the district qualifies for 70 cents on a dollar in building aid, can this be used to fund 30 cents? Again, trying to get a multiplier on our dollars and push our purchasing capabilities forward. So that answer, we have not received yet. Jan and I are awaiting responses. This is very much a fluid situation and we hope to get the same answer on BOSI's aid applicable to facilities and enable us to create a multiplier effect.
What would be the other outcome? I'm sorry, what would be the other outcome? They say we can't use it, period, or we have to pay it for it full if we want to use it, something like that?
They could say that.
I apologize, Jan, I didn't mean to do that.
They could say that it's, it's $1 for $1 and we can't supplement it with the building aid.
Okay.
So we expect the answer to be, you know, similar to the BOSI's answer.
Okay.
Does any, it seems like the emphasis is always on remedial, you know, and special needs and everything. Can any of the money be used to challenge maybe academically talented kids who need more challenges? Any advanced place, is it allowed or any, you know, advanced?
I think it does allow for that, and I think that we would be seeking opportunities to expand, you know, even extracurriculars or a way of inclusion rather than maybe just isolating a particular group. So how can we challenge all of our students? I believe firmly that the Capstone project that we will be launching in the fall at the middle school level does just that. So really working off of things like that to build upon and branch, extend our branches outward so that we can capture Kestonet much wider. But yes, I love the idea.
And what about some of our partnerships with colleges? Can we increase maybe some of that opportunity for those students that would like to?
I know that, yeah, John and I have tried, you know, trying to add more colleges into our.
I know we have Syracuse and I know we have.
Right, right. We have, you know, programs that we have concurrent registration and enrollment where students are earning credit at both the college and concurrently with the high school. But certainly, anything is on the table at this point. We're exploring all options, whether it's for the middle, the higher end, all parts of the spectrum, if you will.
Yeah, you know, I always have thought special ed was both ends of the spectrum. And they really need help.
Exceptional education.
They have to be challenged.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Some of the technology software too, Jan, not only will build in remediation opportunities, but also push above. The right students are excelling, they have the ability to push ahead, while others maybe have, you know, differentiated to support, you know, who might need a little bit more time.
Right. We just can't ignore that population either, you know. Thanks.
Any other questions?
If I could just jump into, just to kind of, I guess, to sort of frame this in a little bit, this is a, the good news here is that this grant, we can continually charge things to this grant. So this isn't a speak now or forever, hold your peace sort of thing. I think as we move forward in this, let's say it's October, let's say it's November, we would have the ability, I mean, obviously depending on funds, but it's not like we have to spend all this money right this minute. I think as we kind of progress, you know, through the year and through the next couple of years, we will have the ability to charge things to this grant. It's just, it can't be stuff that's pre-existing. We can't just say we're going to backfill a budget deficit or something like that. It's got to be something new and responsive to the pandemic. So I mean, again, that is the good news. So we've gotten a pretty robust response to our surveys. I started to say at the beginning, I trail law for some reason, but there was four different surveys we put out yesterday. One to our families, one to our teachers. We put out one to our CSEA, our support staff, and to our leadership within the district as well. We will be using some of those surveys and some of the information we get from there. We honestly want to be surveying our students as well to get their perspectives on things as well. But that's a lot of data going on right now, and also, as you know, some of our students are participating in some other surveys right now, and so we don't want to have too many surveys flying around right now, but I think it's going to be important that we have a continual opportunity to be able to solicit feedback. A great meeting last night with the district parent council, just one of many, you know, good productive conversations I hope to have moving forward. So, you know, with that being said, does anybody have any questions? We tried to kind of encapsulate this in a somewhat briefly, but certainly we can have more discussion about it.
This probably has been said already, when do we get it? Like, do we have to spend it and then apply for it, like, and then they take five years to give to us?
Let's hope not.
Well, let's hope not. The CARES Act experience taught us a lot about how to go about trying to get grants, and the fortunate part about this legislation is it does not include the non-public schools as part of our application, so it takes a little bit of the burden off of us. They were funded separately through the legislation, so they haven't been short-changed on any funding, it just comes from a different pocket. We have a grant deadline on the first part of this in the middle of June, the second part by the end of June, so we're under a very tight timeframe. That's why, as the superintendent said, we'll have an initial plan that we start to walk into as we go forward. We probably won't have actual award and approval for many months, but that will eventually come. But we'll start the process immediately in terms of moving the district forward and building the model for the fall and for the summer. And I think it's going to be a process of continual review and then filing changes with the state as we find we want to move more in this direction or that direction. So it's not a, like the superintendent said, it's not a, once it's set by the end of June, it's set. It's a continuous process that everybody will be involved in moving us forward.
It's not a case of, you have to wait until we spend all the money at some point and then apply for, almost like, you know, the businesses got those PPP loans, they had to spend it all and then ask for forgiveness after they spent it all, and if they spent it properly, it got forgiven, but if it didn't, then it, like, is it, I mean, are we going to be funding this for a little while?
We'll be funding it until it's approved.
Okay.
And then once the award's approved, we can begin to get immediate reimbursement from the state.
Is it drawn on at that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like our title grants or any other grant.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
When you're getting this free money, it's always a process. You know, you hope for the best. So thank you so much for all your work.
Paperwork?
Yes, paperwork and some more.
Did you have something else you wanted to talk about or?
Okay, so that was the superintendent's report and the assistant superintendent's. For my report, I just have some dates that we need to, you know, go through. I don't have anything more than that. So we're in the process of evaluating Mr. Beistrak, and so hopefully everybody gets that done. We have to send that to the SuperEVAL by the first of June, and they consolidate it all, and then we, we meet with Matt to, at the end of, end of June, to go over his evaluation with them.
Diane, the deadline for us filling out is Friday, right?
No, it was actually today.
It was today?
The 25th.
Okay.
But actually, it has to be sent in the 27th.
The 27th.
So you have two days, but, you know, but just, you know, so, because I know there's a couple of board members that haven't done theirs yet.
Spoken like a true teacher, they give you the deadline a couple of days.
I know, you always have to give that cushion of time, so, so if you can get those done by tomorrow, that would be wonderful. Because it is a process. It took me a couple hours to go through the whole thing. So on the 8th, we have our board meeting and we're going to be recognizing the retirees and also the, what is it, the credit recovery program?
OSIS students. Actually, Mrs. Ray can talk about that in a little while.
Right, okay. We'll have more, we'll hear a little bit more about that, but that's on the 8th, and we're honoring the retirees from this year and last year, because last year we weren't able to, you know, to have people en masse. So we're going to do that. That's on the 8th at West Senior. And then on June 2nd, which is next week, the Finance Academy is having their walkthrough at clocks. Again, can't have a big mass of people, so the students come in that are graduating from the Finance Academy and they, the board members that want to go are there, and then we, we, you know, say hello to them and they get their picture taken and get a dinner and then off they go. So award ceremonies still are kind of in a state of flux. And then on the 9th, the, all the other academies are going to have a graduation ceremony at West Senior. Then on the 19th, West Senior is having their graduation on the East Senior Field at 4:00. The 23rd of June, East Senior is having their graduation at 6:30, and then we have our final work session on the, on June 29th. So those are some of the things that, that we have. It's a, it's a busy month for wrapping things up for the board. And then the new board will have their reorganization meeting on July 6th, where we appoint everybody for the, for the year. Okay, any questions from anyone? Okay. Are the assistant superintendents going to speak?
No, they're, they're all finished.
Oh, they're, they're all finished. Okay, okay. So we got all that finished and that was, yes, over and done with. Okay, so what we do with the work sessions this year, which has been really nice, is we have different groups come and tell us what's going on in their different departments. So tonight, we have the music department, Mrs. Renee Robertson and Mr. Jalowski, if you want to come up and let us know all the great things that are going on in the music department.
Hello, hello, everyone. Let me take this off. I'm Nora Renee Robertson. I'm the music coordinator for the district, and I also teach strings at West Senior. I'm here tonight with Trevor Jalowski, who is with us tonight as a West Middle Vocal Teacher, but after July 1st, pending board approval, he'll be taking over as a music coordinator next year. So thank you for having us here tonight. We're excited to talk about our program. And just to give you a little background on Trevor, he actually attended East Elementary School, East Middle School, and East Senior High. He then went on to student teach with Keith Erasing at West Senior and did a long-term sub for us here in the district, spent a little bit of time out of district and then came back to West Seneca, and we're very, very happy to have him here. So welcome, and I'll let you start off.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. Students of music, it's clear, and this is just a small snippet of it, but they, of course, learn to read and perform music. It helps them develop coordination, improve their listening skills, develop team skills, learn discipline, and express emotion. These skills learned in music transfer directly to our academic success. I actually just saw a recent study that, today, that said districts that have a robust active music department have attendance rates that are 11% higher than those that do not and graduation rates that are 12% higher than districts that do not. Yo-Yo Ma, the world-class cellist, says it much more eloquently than I can, that music enhances the education of our children by helping them to make connections and broadening the depth with which they think and feel. If we are to hope for a society of culturally literate people, music must be a vital part of children's education.
So just to tell you a little bit about all the different areas that we teach, first is general classroom music, starts at elementary school, K through 5. All those children meet two times a week for music instruction. They receive instruction on recorder, ukulele. They develop foundational music concepts, singing, and grade-level concerts. At the middle school, we continue with general music for those that choose in 5th, 6th, and 7th grade, and we continue on the foundations of music with an emphasis on music appreciation and music technology. Once they reach the high school, we are able to offer them not only music theory, but AP music theory, which is very, very important for the students that are pursuing a degree, whether it be in music education, music business, music therapy, another big draw for the kids. So we're happy that we're able to offer that. We offer history of classical music, guitar class, and music theater class as well. So a wide variety there.
On the vocal side of our department, in elementary On the vocal side of our department, in elementary schools, we have 5th grade chorus, and of course, that's where their love for theater starts with their musicals. At the middle school level, we have chorus for 6th graders through 8th grade, along with our musicals. At the high school, that continues with choruses, 9th through 12th grade, with select ensembles, along, of course, with the musicals. At the middle school level, we have over 650 students that sing in our choruses, and at each building, this accounts for over 50% of the student population, which is pretty impressive. Performance trips every other year for our high school students, and they have their Kenny Award-winning musicals. Erie County Music Solo Evaluation and festivals for our grades 4 through 12, that, those happen, the festivals and auditions happen in January and March. And then, at the state level, we have our NISMA Solo Evaluation and festivals, also for grades 4 through 12, and those happen on, in November, and then somewhere between May and June.
Our band program begins in 4th grade. We start students on whichever instrument they choose, and then we'd be, we continue in 5th grade with both lessons and band. At the middle school level, we offer lessons and band, and we also offer select ensembles. What a select, select ensemble is, is just students audition to get into that group. So, those might meet during the school day, or they might meet after or before school. We also have cadet band, which is a precursor to our marching band, and we offer jazz band. At the high schools, we offer lessons and band with select ensembles, as well as jazz ensemble. We have over 750 students participating in the band program. We have an award-winning marching band, it's a district-wide marching band, and they're just terrific. We have performance trips every other year, and we also continue on with the Erie County ECMEA Solo Evaluation Festivals and NISMA Solo Evaluation Festivals.
In our orchestral program, at the elementary schools, similar to band, they start at 4th grade with beginning lessons, and then 5th grade lessons, plus their first ensemble experience in orchestra. Our middle schools, we have lessons and orchestra, again, with select ensembles and a string quartet. Our high schools then continue with lessons and orchestra with select ensembles, string quartet, and fiddle groups, so another style of music. In our orchestral program, we have over 680 students that participate, combined with band, that accounts for over a third of the student population that participates in our instrumental programs. They too take performance trips every other year, and participate in the same festivals with Erie County Music and NISMA Solo Evaluations.
So, what does all this culminate in? We perform a lot. If you click on the link, I don't know if we're able to do that. Maybe? Yep. You can see, that pops up? Nope. It should be as, included as a handout as well, but we have over 100 performances and events scheduled already for next year, and even as, today, I, two more come, come in, and we just, we keep adding them, and there'll be more events that come up, Rotary Club, special requests for community venues and corporations, Veterans Day, Roswell, Children's Hospital performances, all things like that, as well as students, we've had students perform in many, many locations, Disney World, Boston, Washington DC, Virginia, New York City, and Tennessee, just to name a few.
I had the pleasure to perform on some of those trips. Moving on, our district is award-winning, which is, is amazing, and we're very proud of that. It's because of all this programming that we've been named one of the best communities for music education. We've been designated eight times total, but five years consecutively now in a row. At our high schools, we've had our Kenny Award-winning musicals. The Kenny Award's an amazing program, students that win the Kennies go on to perform in New York City, and many of those winners have gone on to become Broadway performers, so it's a great bridge to, a pretty impressive career. Also, our marching band, as we know, are state champions because of how amazing they are. Five of our music teachers have been selected as a Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra and Erie County Music Educators Award for Excellence in Music Education. Many of our music teachers have presented at our county and state conferences, and several have guest-conducted our county and state festivals. Students are continually selected for county, regional, and state festivals, and consistently rank very high in their sections. Thank you.
So, that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a little history, so near and dear to my heart, you guys know that. When we first came to Wasena, is at the Winchester Church, it was in 1965, and in 1966, Ray Eldger, Director of Music, called me and said, "Jan, please, come on, you got to teach." I started at Bellwood School, teaching instrumental, and Mr. Wolchik was the principal, and he played the clarinet. So, here I am, a young teacher, wanting to make a hit with the administration, you know, so I would invite him into my classes to play a solo. Mmm, I'll tell ya, it was really great.
Oh, that's terrific.
But, so many years, so many years of music instruction in our, there was someone who wrote, one of the students wrote a couple of years ago, in, in an essay, "What gets him up in the morning to go to school?", and he said, "Music." I remember that, it was in one of the programs that you had, you know, and he had written it on the back, that music is his motivation to go to school. I love the music program, as you know.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, we appreciate all you do for the students, it's really great, it takes a lot of coordination. I hope you're up to the challenge to get all this done.
Nora's been a phenomenal mentor.
That's great, that's great, yes.
If I could just, too, just, Nora, we just want to thank you for your years of service to the district, too, honestly. Your leadership has just been outstanding, and I'm fully confident, I know Mr. Jalowski too, and I'm fully confident that he's going to be able to pick up the baton where you handed it off to him, so, but just thanks to you both for your leadership.
Okay, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
We're going to miss you.
Okay, and then we're going to hear from Stephanie Wright, from the Community Ed Director. She does a lot of programmings, and she's going to let us know exactly what's going on with the Community Ed.
Good evening. So, I'm going to tell you all about Community Ed. Community Ed is a huge umbrella for many things that happen in our community. The mission of Wasena Schools Community Education Program is to provide a variety of affordable, quality programs and enhance and inspire our diverse community to meet their personal needs and goals. So, with that being said, interrupt me at any time if you have any questions, because there is a lot that we do. Continuing education slash community education specifically runs four sessions every year, summer, fall, winter, and spring. It consists of adult and adolescent classes. So, I always tell everybody, we have classes from birth up to 99 years old. That encompasses anything from swim lessons, kids' plate and kids' choice sports clinics, Spanish club that runs after school with certified Spanish teachers, and we currently, right now, currently for our community education staff, have about 30 instructors that are instructing. As far as our adult classes, we have retirement and investing classes, as well as online computer classes, those this current year have been running online solely. We also provide SAT prep classes, provided by district teachers, region's review in all subjects, taught by district teachers, athletics clinics run by district coaches, online learning for professional certifications for two- and four-year degrees, as well as continuing education refreshers for all ages. Those are in partnerships with local universities and through online educators. We do have trips and tours, we do have yoga and martial arts, that is quite popular with the senior citizens, the yoga and the martial arts. We also have Leap Into Learning, which is our biggest summer-run program. It is a four-week summer enrichment program for kindergarten through 5th grade. In the summer of 2018, we expanded to 6th grade as an expansion, because our 5th graders from the year before, parents were calling, asking what could they do this summer, so we expanded to 6th grade. The following summer, we expanded to 7th grade, and this summer, which we were supposed to expand last year, but as you know, that didn't happen, this summer, we will be expanding to 8th grade, so we will be all-encompassing primary and secondary. And, who knows, maybe next year, we'll do a little bit more.
About how many students do you get in those programs, on an average?
Currently, right now, we have 62 enrolled. We have a capacity for 100, if we have to go over 100, we'll address it then, 10 kids per classroom. For 1st and 2nd grade, we will have five classrooms, and then for 3rd through 8th grade, we will have one classroom each. Those are the ones that if we need more, we will expand, but it will be five, 1st and 2nd grade. Those will reside at Northwood Elementary, and then the upper grades will reside at West Elementary.
Are they in all day, like a camp, or?
It's from 9:00 AM to noon. Parents will drop off, and then they'll come back at noon. Actually, the way we're doing it, because we're in two separate buildings, this is our first summer being in two separate buildings, Northwood will be 9:00 AM to noon, and 3rd through 8th grade will be 9:30 to 12:30, to allow for parents to, if they have to do the drop-off at one building, they will have time to get to the other side of town. We will also be consistent with the current plan that the elementary schools have had this year, that the parents will pull up and drop off, and then we will be mailing them signs for, two signs for every family, so that their cars will be labeled for a quick pickup, so they can get to the next building. And it'll make it easier for grandparents as well. We have the before and, oh, I thought somebody had a question. We have the before and after-school program. This runs every single day while school is in session. This program runs from 7:00 AM until 9:00 AM for the light, for the later start buildings, and 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM for the earlier start buildings, and then dismissal until 6:00 PM. Parents can arrange for an earlier dismissal prior to 7:00 AM if they need that, and they can arrange for a later pickup after 6:00 PM if needed, but those are the hours that we run. We do not run on school breaks, we do not run on snow days, but we do run, I always tell parents when they call in a panic, when we have an early dismissal, we are like the post office, we stay until the job is done. So, if they are stuck in traffic, or there's an early dismissal due to weather, we are still in the buildings until they pick up, care is provided. Our morning programs provide breakfast, and our afternoon programs provide snack, and we are located in all the school cafeterias, we utilize the gyms, the libraries, the outdoor spaces, as weather permits, we utilize everything in the building that we can, so the kids aren't just sitting still all day long.
Do you, is that, do you make the budget on that yourselves?
Correct.
Yeah.
We staff around the number of children registered. So, currently, like this year, we are running with lower-capacity levels, due to that, staff is shifted through the building, so if they're not needed at one building, then they are sent to another building where they are needed.
Are you having trouble getting staff to do part of the, another mission?
That's, that's a loaded question. It's hard to get staff who are experienced. I can always get people who apply, it's, it's hard to get staff who are experienced. Our program was started 16 years ago, based on giving internships to the Academy of Education, which no longer exists, and I always put, when we put it in the paper, that we're looking for staff, that we're looking for people who, one, love children, but, two, are also looking to have a foot in the door into the educational world, whether it be they want to be a social worker, a school psychologist, a history teacher, whatever, this is a great place for them to figure out if this is the realm they want to be in. So, I never have an issue getting staff, it's getting staff who are there for the curriculum building, they're there, that, it's more than just babysitting, so. We do currently run in all five elementary schools, and right now, out of East Middle School, the West Middle School kids bus over, that is a 5th and 6th grade program, due to the 5th graders going back down to elementary next year, that program will be ending, because it did not exist prior to East Elementary closing. So, we had created that when East Elementary had closed, for the 5th grade families. That was a transition program, and it has worked up until now, and we don't need it. Right now, currently, we have 85 families enrolled district-wide, with 100 to 125 students staying on a daily basis, due to the availability, due to the availability of the flexible scheduling, meaning, I tell parents, they can come for one day the whole year, they can come every single day the whole year, they are able to change their schedule on a monthly basis. They can change it on a weekly basis, I prefer they don't do that, makes staffing a little difficult, but on a monthly basis, they can change that. Currently, right now, I have 31 supervisors and assistants, four of the supervisors are also district substitute teachers, and they oversee the programs on a daily basis. The last thing that Community Ed oversees is the ASAP program, the Alternative High School Equivalency Preparation Program. This program is available to district high school students in danger of dropping out who have reached compulsory age, okay, to prepare for the New York State High School Equivalency Exam, which is now called the TASK exam, it used to be called the GED exam. Just so you know, what does it mean to be compulsory age? That means they have to be 16 by July 1st of the year, the current school year, and we only go up to age 20. Legally, once they turn age 21, they are now an adult, and then I transition them to somewhere else. I'm telling you right now, we don't get anybody that long, okay? Class is held Monday through Thursday from 5:30 to 9:30 PM at East Senior High School. We actually just ended that this past week, because all of our kids have gone to test, except for one, he will be going the first week of June, but all 12 active students have gone. You will be seeing seven graduates on June 8th, and we have two current, New York Certified Teachers that are currently teaching, they work for Buffalo Public all day long, they come straight from Buffalo Public School, and they teach at night with the kids. So, we will have that. And actually, for the first time ever in the fall, we will be starting the ASAP program with zero kids. We have none rolling over. So, from last year, with the pandemic, it seemed kind of bleak that we had ended the year very suddenly, but all the kids have passed the exam, taken what they need to do, and then we have the ones for this current year. So, everybody has made it through. Questions? I know that was a lot, and I went really fast, but I know there are others that want to speak.
You have a lot going on there.
Yeah.
So, Leap Into Learning, you say that they voice only for like 8 to 9 to 12, and what about parents that have to work for public, like, how would that, like, the commercial for their children, that they can sign up if they work?
Well...
You know, this is a conversation that maybe you could have with Mrs. Wright, because really, the public doesn't speak at our work sessions. So, if you could ask her at the end of the meeting...
Do you want to give me a call tomorrow? I can give you my number, it's 677-3180. Give me a call tomorrow, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Okay, so then we have English as a New Language, and we have Teresa Hongs, if she would like to come up, she is the program coordinator. With a little assistance from Mrs. Praseko.
She's simply the most, the brain behind the operation. Yeah, because our facilitator, Mrs. Lopez, cannot be here today, so, I guess, so she's still, she'll be here.
Karen, can you just make sure she speaks into the microphone?
Want a mic out?
Sorry.
I'm shortened.
Yeah. I think there's also a handheld microphone underneath, that's more comfortable.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Beistr, board member, I'm Teresa Hongs. I'm actually the high school ESOL teacher, and also District E&amp;L Coordinator. I was, you know, glad I was given this opportunity to do a presentation about our program. So, let's get started, because I realize that I actually definitely over-prepare, like I prepare my lesson plan all the time, over-prepare, so, so when the slide go over, I might, you know, certain slide, I might just touch some very important point. I want to leave some time for you to ask some questions at the end, okay? Oh, so, which one is it?
The first one.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, our District E&amp;L program was established in the year of 2000 with assistance from local BTEC. As a result of that, we become one part, we've become one of the Title III consortium school, which means that we can have a free access to professional development, and also a lot of support resources provided by the local Arban. And I believe that you were providing with one with the shield, the acronym, there are 40 of them, I only picked 12 here, because...
Education has a lot of acronyms.
Yes, yes, and because it is 12 you're going to hear in the presentation, so I don't want you completely, you know, feel confused, so you can have something to refer into.
Could you tell them about the quiz?
Yes, actually, I was thinking, I should greet you in Mandarin Chinese, and say, "Okay, I'm going to give you a quiz afterward." So, you have experience of how to be, you know, what kind of emotion you go through as a language learner in an academic setting. Anyway, let's get back to that. So, anyway, in order to receive Title III funds, we had to be in compliance with the CRPA 154, also that CRPA 14 is called a, Education, New York State Education Law pertaining to L. Education, and in... And in addition to that, the one of the requirement, sorry, I can't really see very clearly, I'm going to use my slide here, okay? One of the requirements for CRPA 154 is that we had to centralize our ENL instruction. In order to maximize our human resources, west side, east side of the town was selected because the schools are in more close proximity. So, East Senior, East Middle, and East Elementary back then, now it's Northwood, have become the ESL instruction site. In addition to that, every year, we had to provide a certificate assurance to the state to assure that our English language learner are receiving quality education provided by a fully-certified TESL teacher. Another thing we had to complete is comprehensive L education plan, which is completed by our facilitator, Mrs. McManus and myself, in September every year. And after we complete all those documents, we hand it over to Mr. Vice Rec, and he signed it, then we submit it to the state. After the state approves it, then approves our plan, then we will get a notification from local Arban, our allocation of the Title III funds. And as you can see, that Title III fund is a federal resource, which can use, can be used for buying supplementary materials and to pay for our after-school program and sometimes summer programs, okay? Because there was such an increase, there are 20% increase of L population in New York State in a very short period of time, oh, I think that was the one. Yeah. So, New York State felt there's a need to amend the existing CRPA 154. So, in 2015, they just, they did just that, and they amended 10 areas of the CRPA 154. I only listed six of them, and I'm not going to go through all of them because there are just so much information there. However, the six areas impact all the district about their instruction and programming and resource the most. I just, you know, picked a couple of them mentioned here. The first one is identification process, we call it intake. In the past, it probably takes about an hour to assess a student, their English proficiency level, so we can place them, you know, accordingly. But now, take up to three-plus hours, because not only we test their English proficiency, we have to test their math level, and also have to have an interpreter on-site to help us to test their native language proficiency in reading, writing, listening, speaking. And also, in this process, we sometime are able to identify student, whether it's a SIF student or not, student with interrupted formal education, right? Or even student come with the IEP. Because if a student come with the IEP, we had to put a team together called LPT to determine whether the students will be qualified for testing accommodation while they're taking NICE test. And if the students are safe, then we have to give them another screener called a multilingual literacy screener to determine their level. So, you can see just the first intake process, it can take forever, literally. So, I literally had to make a checklist for my department member. Every time we test a student, we had to check list every single item because we can't afford to miss any important step. And I will skip to the last one, the grade span, which in fact, impacted us very much. In the past, we were allowed to group similar proficiency level across multiple grade levels during in one classroom. For example, maybe second grade all the way to fourth grade. They are all learning cyword. They're all learning phonics. But now, we only allow two continuous grade. So, you can imagine that, what kind of impact it has on a school district in terms of a human resource. Okay, well, let's take a look, our wonderful TESL teacher. We have a three teacher at Northwood to cover K-25, and two teacher at East Middle, and two teachers at high school level. Please take note, the buttons here say the state locations are fluid based on the needs. And because we are all K-212 certified, we can teach kindergarten and, you know, 12th grade, and I have done that for many years when I first started. However, we do not want to do that, obviously, because, you know, for good reason. But if one building's requirement has been met, but there's another building, we cannot meet a requirement, and we have to do some stepping adjustment. So, in the past six years, I think this only happened once. One of the high school teacher, they traveled to middle school to help them with half-day, you know? So, this could, might happen next year, because grade five moved from middle school to Northwood. So, we might have a half of the staff moving from middle school to Northwood next year. So, what do ESL teacher provide? Basically, we have a three big component in our program. One is called a standalone ENL instruction, which is designed for the student at entering emerging level, which means they came here with little or no English, and also they may know a couple of cywords. Those are student with standalone ENL instruction. At high school, that's a credit-bearing course. And another one is integrated ENL. This is a new component after the amended CRPA 154. In the past, we do not have to go to ELA classroom. Now, we have, we are required to co-teach with a ELA teacher who have L in the classroom. Another one is called content support. Use myself, example, I have co-taught living environment for three years, and I co-taught earth science for two years. You wonder why we're doing that? Because there are some students, some of our students already score at advanced level. They probably don't need much help in the ELA, reading and writing areas, but they struggle very much in science or math. So, then we will choose to go into the classroom to learn the materials and to modify, to really digest it, and to provide after-school program to help student to come up to speed because they are at high school level, you know, they have to pass region exam in order to graduate and to go to college. So, the, our after-school program, summer program are funded by Title III. If we have money, we'll do summer program. We don't, usually, we can provide after-school program. We also do, one of the things that I think our student love the most is, I didn't put it here, is our annual ENL family dinner night. And our student, parents love that event the most because they'd love to share the food from their country, and the student love to show, you know, their parent their work, and the parents enjoy meeting the teacher, building administrator, district administrator and board member. And also, that provides a great opportunity for L parent to networking among themselves, okay? ESL teacher do provide PD session for their building teacher, especially new teacher who have never taught L before. And the last item, I think, is really, is a very strong point about all ESL teacher is that we are advocate for our student and their family. We literally serve as a bridge between the two entities, because frequently, we see a student multiple times during the day, and we can have them for several years. So, we tend to have a very strong relationship with our student and their family. Consequently, if a family has some situation, whether they have a financial need or social emotional need, we are the first person to know. So, we're able to recommend them for the needed support services. So, this next slide, I probably won't go to a lot of detail, but I just wanted to bring your attention, after NICE test, they will be placing one of the five level there. Take a look at transition level. They were, the state say they only need one unit, which is 180 minutes a week, which is 36 minutes a day of ENL instruction. However, our transitioning student frequently reading at a grade two or grade three level. So, can you imagine 36 minutes instruction that including co-teaching? This is extremely insufficient. So, basically, we sometime, as teacher, we want to do what's best for the student. We'll group all first three groups together. So, we have a multiple lesson plan in order to individualize, to help each student, you know, help them to succeed, because if a transitioning kid is a 10th grade or 11th grade, you can imagine they really cannot experience success at a high school level. So, let's see, who are our students from? Our current students are from 17 countries, four different continents. Actually, as of last Friday, we have, we have served 94 students. And there are 20 languages spoken by our Ls and their family. India alone have a street language spoken there, Marathi, Punjabi, and Tamil. The last slide is about the testing accommodation. Like a student come with IEP, L are given the testing accommodation because they are not exempt from any of the state assessment. If a student, if a fourth grade student came to us last week, and this will happen to be the math assessment, they are taking it. The only thing, the only exam they are exempt is a grade three to A ELA exam. They are exempt for one year upon their arrival, and they are taking the second year. So, you think, how do our ENL exit the program? There are several ways for them to exit the program. For all K-12, if they score at a commanding level, which means they're proficient, and they can exit the program. For grade three to A, they have to score at advanced level, and/or three or above on the NICE slot in the same year, and they can exit the program. For K-12, expanding level on NICE slot or 65 above on grade 11 English reading exam. So, after that, they become flat, which we will monitor in two years, and they will also allow testing accommodation for two years. So, this concludes my presentation, and, but I will open up for the question. I hope you don't feel like information overload. You feel informative, but not information overload.
We added staff this year, didn't we? Didn't we just add someone to your staff?
Yes, yes, right before COVID. Yeah, Lauren Smith for middle school. Yes, yeah. Oh, yes, yes, and in fact, we have one student, actually, probably more student could have pursue a seal by literacy, but because of COVID, it was actually a little difficult. But there's one student will be doing English and PASH2, who's from Afghanistan. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, just to let you know, I didn't put this in my slide, the language development take about five to seven years. So, we have a student, just, you know, I'll give you one more minute. We have a family of four came from Afghanistan last year. Four of them, two of them 10th grade, 10-years-old, 15-years-old, have never gone to school. So, when we do the screening, you know, initially, we have to help the kids hold the pencil. So, two kids have never gone to school, and two older one claim they went to school several years. So, through interpretation, everything, eventually, I get more information that definitely they are SIF, and they say they got into school because they played cricket. So, I say, how much, what did you actually learn? They say, really, nothing. So, I have been teaching them subtraction, addition, and multiplication, but it's a very laborious process, because last year, since it was COVID, so I was able to remote doing math instruction and also doing English, obviously. But just so you know, it takes a long time for a regular student to acquire English proficiency at grade level, much longer for a student with a formal interrupted education like our student at high school. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for doing all that for this population. It's really great.
Can I ask a quick question? What is the, I'm sorry, age up to, is it 18 or 21? Can they...
Well, they can stay up to 21.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, my two students right now, one is going to 18, one is going to 17, but they, they right now still cannot read and write, although we have worked with them for a whole year. But because they have never really come to school, they really have a hard time making connection. For example, they sit in a wall like a BOX, right, they teach them fun, OX. They just couldn't do that. There's just, there's no connection. So, it's, it's a process, but you know, once they, you know, they pick up, then you build a sense of a, you know, connection.
It's probably, the younger ones might be a little bit easier than someone that's already set.
Hopefully, the third grade will definitely, you know?
Yeah.
That's why this year, we're actually able to provide five-day summer school to the entering emerging school, because last year, due to COVID, we couldn't provide AIS, which is an language exam. So, we had enough money carryover from K-3 come. That's why we're doing a five-day summer school for these kids at a very low level for math and English.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So, they're all in regular classrooms, and then you do services by pulling them out?
Yes, the standalone is that pull them out. They are solo, but they're also entitled regularly ELA classroom. That's why we're going to co-teach, which, I'm sorry, really doesn't make sense for the entering kid, because for example, high school, 70 minutes in the classroom, we can differentiate, how do you differentiate high school English class, say, of mice and man, and to a student that doesn't even know what is on and but and or. So, that's what I taught them this week, trying to teach them how to base them, using word or or but. They just forget. So, I use 10 different examples, saying, this or that, red or blue, a cat or dog. Eventually, I just say, okay, copy my sentence, and we'll, we'll begin. So, so for me, going there for 70 minutes is a wasting resource. So, a lot of time, we, you know, we use a little bit of flexibility. It's students like this, we pull them out, give them more individualized time. But that's the one I stay on.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you, Mrs. Praseco, her buddy.
Moral support's a good thing.
Yep, yep, yep. Does the board have anything else that they would like to discuss? If not, could we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Never have to adjourn the meeting? Okay, the meeting is over. Thank you so much for everybody coming tonight. Thank you all the presenters. Really great to get all this information. Thank you.